And I'd like to welcome Mandy to the meeting. Welcome, Mandy. And thank you for coming at our request tonight.
Hi, thank you, and thank you for having me. It's been a while since I've had the opportunity to see everybody even on screen. So for those of you who are watching that I haven't been able to meet yet, I'm Mandy Speakman, the Director of the Council on Aging here in Chatham. And as we move forward in this process toward building a new council on aging facility, I was happy to have the opportunity to bring some thoughts and information, not only from what we've learned over the past year, but from nearly two decades of working with older adults. So as we slide into this presentation, I have a nifty little graphic here that shows the Council on Aging is sort of the center of the wheel. And Shereen commented on, you know, inviting me to speak on the value of the Council on Aging to the community. And I think this is a common conversation we've had over the last few years during this facility process. What does the COA do? Why is it important? And how do we contribute to people's quality of life? And we make not only referrals out to other organizations, but we take in referrals and warm handoffs. So when we are operating at our best, we are that connecting point, whether it's coming in or going out. We are able to make really effective referrals for people and make a warm handoff as opposed to handing someone a business card telling them to call a phone number and good luck. We are often a touch point for long-distance family and friends and caregivers. And we are connected to a lot of people in our community, some of whom are very highly visible and inactive in the community, and some of whom are more marginalized. And we're really privileged to have the trust of all of these people. The Council on Aging in a lot of our work supports and serves an often hidden and sometimes disenfranchised part of our community. For some of these folks, English might be a second language, or they may not speak English at all. And for those folks who are not white, they may also not see themselves as represented in our leadership. So for many different reasons, we do have a segment of our community that are less likely to attend any kind of town meetings. And other reasons for that could be the digital divide. It could be physical infirmity. It could be cognitive or mental health issues. So in working with all of these people, the COA is really privileged to be a trusted source, not only of information for folks, but as a place that will guard the dignity and the confidentiality of people while really effectively connecting them to resources that truly meet their needs. And to illustrate that, I just wanted to share just one example of a recent client that the COA has worked with. So we began working with an older adult last fall who'd had a severe accident, a really difficult and prolonged recovery in a facility. And they lost their residence during this time. Once discharged, they were at risk for homelessness. They were unable to work due to their injury. They had no income. They were unable to speak English. And they found the language barrier. And COVID-19 prevented them from resuming any kind of normal post-accident life. So as a result of being unable to connect with a primary caregiver due to COVID limitations and restrictions on new patient visits, they were blocked also from applying for Social Security Disability, Department of Transitional Assistance funding, and additional medical care. So the COA was able to make that really effective connection to Outer Cape Health Services, who has a translator, the Homeless Prevention Council, the Chatham Housing Authority, and the DTA. And this person now has an apartment, medical care, and income. And this is just one example of the really effective work done by the COA that you won't ever see in a newsletter, or a photograph, or a monthly report. And that's a great segue into the next portion of my talk here, which is the Elder Working Group and the COA as a partner for public safety. So the Council on Aging is part of a cross-sector working group that really prioritizes collaboration. Our priority also is the safety of older adults and the effective use of town resources. Following a tragedy in 2015, the COA, the Police Department, the Fire EMS, and the Health Department began meeting regularly, really with the goal of breaking down silos and creating a much stronger internal network. The VNA's Public Health Nurse and the Chatham Housing Authority have since joined us as well. And a priority of this group has been creating process and structure for best practices, including extensive training in adult protective services, which is something that touches all of our departments. This group has been really effective in creating and implementing the Chatham COA referral form. This form was an outgrowth of the now-defunct REACH program, which was Reaching Elders with Additional Community Help. It's an electronic form that's now used by Chatham's public safety responders to refer people to the COA who they observe might be in need of some additional community help and resources. More visibly, this group has also implemented programs in risk reduction, which includes identifying and documenting homes where vents might be at risk for blockage by snow. We have caravan around town distributing ice melt in scoops. We have the practice of the Council on Aging following up with any of the folks on the Do Not Plow list to ensure that emergency services have unfettered access during snow events. And we also have partnered with the Fire and EMS folks to offer home hazard assessments, and that's optional for anyone who opts to participate. The COA and fire personnel in non-COVID times offer to visit someone's home and identify potential fall and fire safety risks indoors and outside the home. And the COA can follow up with any kind of education or assistance in getting safety equipment when necessary. The years of work that we've been doing have really laid a... We've created a really solid relationship. And I believe that we have laid a foundation that will serve this town well in years to come. I think that we have been able to save the town money through faster identification of at-risk older adults. And we meet the COA's ultimate goal of being able to provide our residents with really comprehensive tools to ensure the opportunity to stay in their homes safely.
So, Mandy, this group really... Sorry, I didn't want to jump on top of your presentation. Okay. So this Elder Working Group, I don't know why I'm getting feedback, this Elder Working Group really is kind of a fascinating hidden gem of the town. And I just, you know, you guys meet once a week, is that what it is? And sort of, and it's an internal confidentiality sort of discussion about some of the more at-risk people in town?
We generally meet monthly or more often as necessary. And through COVID, more often has often been necessary. And yes, it's an internal working group. So under the umbrella of Town of Chatham, we are able to converse confidentially and make sure that no one's, you know, falling through the cracks.
That's great. Is there anybody else that's on this group that wants to add anything about the group that's on the call right now or on our meeting? Okay, well, we've got Dave. It looks like the whole team is, wants to speak about it. Chief Dave, do you pass Qualley, put his hand up first if you want to speak? Chief Dave?
Yeah, Madam Chair. I just got to say that this working group is doing really great things for the town. And our demographic is older people. You know, Mandy spearheaded this, and I think this is a really important thing that we do. You know, I'll share a story too. You know, when you have a patient that calls 911 and they need to go to the hospital, but they can't because they take care of their spouse that has Alzheimer's, who are you going to call? Well, we call the COA. You know, there's numerous cases I can talk about. But you know, this working group has really done a great thing for our town. And again, the COA is, it can't be more important in our town. You know, I'd like, if Mark Keller's on to, you know, speak more about the working group, because, you know, he's our representative. But before I go there, you know, we have the Life Safety Educator Program in the schools. And last year in Massachusetts, for the first time, not one child under 18 died in a fire. And I think that's due to the Life Safety Educator Program. And the state's really proud of that, DFS. Well, we have a program that we participated in, and we plan to expand in the future. And that's the Senior Life Safety Educator Program. So that's coming on board this year, I hope. So we got the grant funding. And you know, that's the next targeted group where we lose a lot of people in fires. And it's, I just think it's so important. But I'll let Mark talk about the working group. Thank you.
Okay, I'll let Mark go next if you'd like. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chief. How are you? So I just, before I even get into this, I just want to tell everybody how wonderful it is to work with the folks over at COA. They are so dedicated to what they do. And they are so caring about the people in the community. I have the privilege of working primarily with Mandy and Eva. And they are just so professional and so knowledgeable about what they do. It's excellent for us. This whole program's been a safety net for those who may fall through the cracks. Our providers are usually the ones who see these folks first. They can identify someone who's either in trouble or starting to go down that road. And in the time it takes for them to return to the firehouse, they have the ability to report that, their findings, to our group. And before you know it, we have a plan in place primarily due to the COA group and what they can do and with their connections. We get the resources in there right away, and they're safer in their home, and they're given what they need right away. I talked about our working group and what we've accomplished with my colleagues in other towns. And as soon as their jaws are lifted off the table, they're like, well, you actually know who those people are, and you can talk to them? And it's, yes, and it's absolutely amazing. In addition, our working group and through our Council on Aging and through Elder Services of Cape Cod, we've been able to educate our staff so well to look for identifiers early on to help folks. It's second nature to them now. So it's not uncommon that, you know, hey, we went here last night. They're going to need some help in the next few weeks. And we get the ball rolling way before anybody starts to have any kind of significant issues, medical issues, whatever it is. It's just a great group. It is great to work with everybody in the group and have a good forum to discuss situations that come up and be able to address them. So I can't say enough.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I see that our health agent, Judith Geor, has her hand raised as well. Welcome, Judith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to heartily agree with everything that Mark just said. From the public health standpoint, the asset that Mandy, the COA, and her staff, Eva, have been to me has been just amazing in the last 10 years. Our working group is just such a great way of communicating. If I have an issue, if I get a call that a senior is living in a poor situation, I immediately know I can reach out to them, and we can work as a team to remedy the situation and help make it better. And again, in the last year with COVID, we've really worked closely. They've been a great asset again. And just this week, as Dr. Bob mentioned, kind of hit the, it hit the fan today as far as getting the homebound population vaccinated. We're going to be starting that the end of this week, beginning of next week. But without the hard work of Mandy and her team, who have the pulse of the community, they know who these people are. They were able to put the list together, contact every single person, know who needs what special attention, and put that list together for us. We wouldn't have been able to do it. So I highly support the COA and all their hard work.
Great, thank you, Judith. Deputy Police Chief Mike Anderson, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. Going last, I apologize, I'm going to seem like a broken record. But the Police Department couldn't be more fortunate to have the COA as a valuable partner. A very high percentage of our calls for service involve members of our senior community. And a high percentage of those calls usually involve a senior in crisis, whether it's a mental illness, a type of disability, abuse or neglect, fraud, or just being alone and needing assistance with day-to-day life challenges. These types of calls, when they come directly to the police, they tax our resources. We found that trying to rely on county or state agencies for assistance in these areas can be very frustrating. As you can expect, the majority of these crisis-type calls for service primarily occur on nights, weekends, and especially holidays. We also have to share these resources with other Cape communities. And sometimes these agencies are spread very thin. Several years ago, the working group was formed to share information and resources and to provide a true team approach to deal with some of these issues ourselves. The goal of our team is to provide a safety net. We try to identify the persons at risk and provide assistance or guidance to these folks before it reaches a crisis point. And I will add that, especially during COVID, all of the agencies and our partners have been very creative with some of these solutions. These individuals can be identified by incidents or interactions with any one of our team's respective areas. The Fire Department, Board of Health, Police, and the COA all have had occasions where they might interact with a citizen. And that interaction could be concern enough to bring it to our group for discussion. I can think of many, many occasions where a member of our community was identified, and our team was successful in assisting them with a problem, either bringing the assistance to them or bringing them to assistance. The efforts of our team helps to prevent a large number of persons at risk in our community from falling through the cracks or being unknown until it's too late. And as Mark Keller said, that this group should be and could be used as a model for other towns. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. All right, Mandy, are you still with us? I just wanted to...
I am here.
Okay. Do you want to further your conversation with us?
I would, thank you. And thanks, everybody, my colleagues that took the time to come to this meeting this evening. And I will just, I guess, be the third one to jump on the theme that we really are a model. And I work with all 14 other Council on Aging Directors on Cape Cod. And there is nothing like this in any of our neighboring towns. So we should be really proud of the work that gets done here. So thank you to all of my partners in the other departments. So moving on from that sort of hidden outreach service side, I can slide into some of the more public aspects of what the Council on Aging does. And I can't talk about that right now without talking a little bit about the last year. So the last year has really challenged us and given us the opportunity to be really innovative. In some instances, we were able to recreate and reinvent what we do. In some cases, we created something brand-new altogether. And we've done that through a lot of live programming. So virtual live programming on the Zoom and Zumba platform, and in-person live programming in a drive-through fashion. So last month, February, marked the one-year anniversary, 12th month of distributing our pantry mobile food distribution outside in the front driveway. I think we've, Eva has worked really hard, gotten that from a two-hour to a one-hour to, I think, last month, we broke the record and did it in 48 minutes. Our folks are very compliant and appreciative to still have access to programs like this. And knowing that isolation and loneliness has been such a factor this year, we were able to start integrating drive-through programming with a social, nutritional, entertainment component as well. So those drive-through events have, we know the value they have for people. They tell us, whether it's chatting through a car window, you know, with a neighbor, waving, commenting that they appreciate having had the reason and a purpose to get out of the house. For the staff, it really gives us a hidden component, an opportunity to do an eyes-on wellness check of folks. And it's amazing, in a conversation that lasts a couple minutes, how we can pick up on things that might need to be followed up on. So we intend to continue with that as long as COVID continues to be with us. We know that this year has just been incredibly difficult for all of us. And we really have found it to be remarkable that folks have come to the COA, physically come in our drive-through events, and come to us through the phone and email, who have never touched the COA before. So that is definitely a silver lining. And from, you know, segueing from that silver lining back into the idea of the second part of the comments, which are, "We really appreciate the virtual programming and the drive-through events, but we can't wait to get back in the building." So we know that there's some real value to being able to be together in a physical space. And you'll see in one of these slides that there's a picture. And this was pre-COVID, so please don't worry about the maskless people who are not socially distanced. This is before, and hopefully this will be us after as well. And some of our lessons learned, you know, and the real losses that we feel from losing access to physical space is that caregivers have really been left behind. We know from the Community Needs Assessment that we finished in 2016 that there was a desire from the community for an expansion of caregiver support programs. That final report recommended that we expect and prepare for an increased demand for COA services. And that was pre-COVID. What we know now, over the last year, the supportive and the medical day programs in our area for adults have either been suspended indefinitely, or they have gone out of business altogether. We also have learned from the past year that effective in-person connections happen most effectively and consistently in an indoor space. Even before the pandemic, the COA was so much more than bingo and lunch. No, we don't do bingo, but yes, we definitely do lunch. And there are needs for dedicated space for us as we grow older. And the needs and desires of a 60-year-old are very different from the needs and desires of a 90-year-old. And as we age, we all come to the Council on Aging for different purposes. We come for obvious reasons like social connection, fitness, recreation, arts, lifelong learning, volunteering, legal help, services, and more. For some people, retirement or other life circumstances, such as becoming a primary caregiver for a grandchild, results in unexpected shifts in income. And these folks may have a need to access financial benefit programs or, and/or low- or no-cost programming. And regardless of whether someone is a younger senior or an older elder, meeting in a really private and comfortable space can help staff create a relationship in which the client can feel secure and really effective service provision can happen. Behind closed doors are where those relationships are really built. So what we know from the last year is that social isolation and loneliness really stink. And they have real physical health effects on people. And I'm not asking you to take just my word for it, but the CDC has released some studies recently which find that, no surprise, social isolation is, significantly increases a person's risk of premature death from all causes. And those risks may rival smoking, obesity, and physical inactivity. Social isolation is associated with about a 50% increased risk of dementia, something that I think we all fear. And loneliness, again, no surprise, is associated with depression, anxiety, and suicide. And I think every one of us coming out of the last year can identify with feeling anxious, lonely, or all of the above. So from the dark news to the light at the end of the tunnel, the CDC recommends, you know, they make recommendations for what you can do if you are experiencing these kinds of loneliness and anxiety symptoms. And interestingly enough, they refer people to local area agencies on aging, the Elder Care Locator, the National Council on Aging, and ARP, all of whom happen to work directly with and refer to local councils on aging, including us here in Chatham. So what we know is, sliding into this new year, or sliding out of this year into the next, you know, we hit that one-year mark this week, right? And so doing a look back, one of the trends that we see is that, at the Council on Aging, we've had an increased usage of services and programs. So one example would be the most recent drive-through event where we were able to distribute 72 homemade meals, supplemented by some wonderful box chocolates donated by Robert Paul Properties, and some really creative and beautiful handmade paper fortune cookies, which were in theme with our event. And we were able to connect with those 72 people. And that was almost twice as many people as we could have served if we were inside in the dining room. So we were happy to welcome those people to our front driveway. And in looking back, I thought, you know, it feels like we're seeing a lot more people and talking to a lot more new people. And so I ran the numbers. And if you look at this quick chart that I put together, you'll note that we were able to welcome about 300 brand-new, unique users of the COA who had never utilized the Council on Aging before. So I'm really grateful that, in a year like this, we were able to connect with and provide service for those folks. And that is a great, I guess, segue into taking a moment to just show you a picture of our staff at the Council on Aging in the next slide. And for me to say that I'm so proud of the work that they've done and the exemplary level of service that they've provided. The staff and drivers have done amazing work in really unprecedented and constantly changing conditions. Debbie, Eva, Kathleen, Maura, and Nancy have been steady, friendly, reassuring voices, whether it was on the phone, at the picnic table, out back, or through someone's car window. Dick, Paul, Roger, and Steve really helped us pivot the transportation program so that instead of transporting people, we were doing the pickup and deliveries, which continues to this day. So our bus has been a welcome sight in many driveways this year with groceries and medication deliveries. And so I know, given all of that, we are all really looking forward to something approaching normal. And so while we maintain this level of services and programming during the continuing pandemic, we're also looking ahead to the future. And what I know, what I know heading into this future is that our residents have really continuously, consistently expressed a need and desire to be in the building again. And that the virtual programming and the drive-through events are appreciated, and they're acceptable placeholders while we continue to work back toward being together. Thinking about a new facility, I see opportunities for expanded service and programming, not only during normal times, but should we find ourselves in a pandemic event again or some other kind of emergency, we can take what we've learned and what we're doing now. And with better parking, better circulation, increased access to outdoor space, a different location, a design that would facilitate outdoor programming, expanded technology that would allow us to build on that virtual live programming, we could really, we could really even expand what we've already done this year. And looking at... And looking at what we've learned and how that translates perhaps into a new facility, we now know that there was a whole segment of the population that we weren't touching before. These people who are either homebound or caregivers and have great difficulty getting out of the home, who really love the live virtual programming, and they have indicated they'd be really interested in continuing that into the future. So with a new facility and different access to technology, we could offer a hybrid approach, live classes that are also streamed for participation by people at home. There's some really exciting possibilities for the future here. So ending on a positive note, I just wanted to share with you all some of the comments that this, shared by our residents with the staff. And these comments come in over the phone and email and a lot of lovely handwritten cards. So if we look at the last slide, not too many slides tonight. In response to receiving a Valentine card, such a simple thing from the COA, someone said, "It's really nice to know someone, it's nice to feel that someone knows we are out here." And at the end of a call regarding vaccination frustration, which is a common theme these days, we had one caller say the COA staff was a breath of fresh air. After walking a caller through the process of trying to make a vaccination appointment, one person said, "The Council on Aging is like a little port in the storm." After our Veterans Day drive-through, we got a lovely note. "Things were certainly different this year with our parade and our ceremony. So to have you organize a recognition lunch for us was so wonderful. It really shows what kind of heart our community has. Thank you." We've had so many thank yous and notes of appreciation for assistance, and also the continued loan of durable medical equipment, which has been highly utilized for folks who have driven off Cape to get their vaccines in accessing those larger mass vaccination sites. And the last comment I leave you with is from a resident who said, "The COA is the best-kept secret in Chatham." So I really hope that after this past year, tonight, and moving forward into the future with a new facility possibly, that the COA is less of a secret, maybe more of an open secret. And I thank you very much, I thank the board and you, Madam Chair, for your time tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I am, you know, very excited about this project and bringing it to town meeting. It's been five long years in the making, as Slickman Castro just noted. He and I toured your building, I think, five years ago, and decided that it was totally inadequate, and it still is inadequate. And you now have developed programs that will fill a new building and bring a new building to life, and I think we have, and I won't steal anybody's thunder, but I think we have presentations coming forward that will even excite the town even more because of the cost and the, you know, it's a wonderful location, we have a free site right in the village center. And so I'm extremely excited about this, and I hope the town gets excited about it as well. You know, we've been through an awful year, a little bit more to go, but boy, we really need to embrace a new Council on Aging in West Chatham in a couple of years and celebrate and put COVID in our rearview mirror, so.
Many years we've been looking, doing through this process. I think sixteen-ten really has its merits. I'm looking forward to having a formal vote to put this up or down. Hopefully this is an affirmative vote, because I think it is the right site. But with this past year being so different with everything, what elements of a new facility do you think is going to be the most beneficial for the COA and programming moving forward? You know, based on the experience of this past year? It's my only question I have for you.
Thanks, Corey. I think Joel will be able to touch on this a little bit more. This is something that we've started talking about. So taking what we already knew we needed in a new facility and applying, you know, COVID lessons learned. And my stance is that, given, I find it highly unlikely that we're not going to find ourselves in some other either health or emergency situation again in the future. So what we know about a new facility is that there would be the opportunity for adequately spaced rooms that would allow for distancing if we needed to, an adequate ventilation system that would not disperse air, shared air throughout the building, but would allow for air purification in each select room. I mentioned or touched on the idea of technology, the idea that we could run in-person classes at the same time as streaming them live virtually, so that we're really, we're truly accessible to every part of the population. I think if we find ourselves in need of running outdoor programming like we are now, something that is a parking lot with safe traffic flow, that's purpose-built, would be a huge benefit. And I know that there are things I'm not even thinking of, because we're still in the weeds. We're still living this and dealing with this crisis on a daily basis. So I would, I can share all that personal experience and observation, and I know Joel and Rick have a higher-level view, and they can also share some of the lessons learned from, you know, our neighbors in the region.
Been working with Mandy and Rick and Terry, and we took the comments that the Select Board gave us at the last presentation for, what would you do with the building going forward? And if I take Mandy's presentation, we sort of divided the principles and what the building's providing into five categories. And the first one, it really, she showed all that work that was being done with the staff of five in that final picture. And the first thing that you want to do with a new building is design it for volunteers so that you can increase your services without burdening that staff excessively with the new building. So we need to provide space for volunteers to have a touchdown place, a desk, temporary workstations, we need to provide spaces that they can use that are easy to learn how to use the equipment and that. So it's really making a friendly environment so you can provide these services that are obviously going to increase due to the experience we've had in the last year. The center, Mandy mentioned lifelong learning and the arts, the intellectual stimulation. The wellness is the third category, the healthy, active living for different age groups. And then I think the sort of, all of us, whether you're a senior or not, have seen the information that comes through health departments and Council on Aging's. That happens all the time, but it's been so much clearer during the COVID how strong the information delivery service is through buildings. And it all can't be electronic, it has to be through the provision of professional offices where temporary folks can come in and have a seminar or a lecture on different aspects of aging or aging in place or taxes and estate planning, and really disseminating important information to community residents. And then as an architect, the most difficult one is accommodating what I think Mandy mentioned is one of the most important things for decreasing dementia and Alzheimer's and other depressions is the socialization aspect. How do you create a building that's adaptive to that? The heart of the building is that two-thousand-square-foot multipurpose room that's subdivisible and served by the kitchen. This is a conceptual view of that room with the kitchen in the background. And you can see the room's big enough for tables to be adequately spaced out. It's clearly open to the outside, so it has just a tremendous amount of natural ventilation, has doors to the outside that are outside of this picture, but allow for outdoor programming to happen. So we're sort of fortuitous that the heart of the building already had a lot of features that would be necessary for COVID. We had designed a kitchen that could be used by the public and have all the needs that you needed for Department of Health requirements in that kitchen. So it's a space that meets all those requirements, but is a very public room, and it's a room that can be used by your volunteers. I'll say this is a lucky break. For different reasons, we have the lobby in this senior center in the back of the building. You enter on the right side of the slide on the left and walk down the hallway, and then the lobby is very much distinct from the entry spot. You can see the lobby is big enough so that we have adequate social distancing at the tables. And that corridor getting to the lobby is wide enough that you can have that three-to-six-foot of social distancing in front of the rooms and getting to the lobby. Why is that an issue? As people come for deliveries or drop-off, there may be a number of different people coming to the center and having that area of socialization separate from the entry realized became a very important issue. And the paradigm of this particular senior center has become very popular in the centers that we're designing today. The technology of air purification, there's two black boxes on the wall and one black box in the ceiling. These are relatively affordable air purification systems that increase the way we can purify the air within each one of those classrooms while they're being occupied. And this technology can recirculate the room air every half hour. And we do have natural ventilation, and we do have fresh air coming in, but on a day like yesterday when it happened to be quite cold all of a sudden, you can increase your air changes, your air exchange in each room without necessarily impacting the heating and cooling system. So it gives us that very high level of purification without impacting your operating costs. And it's just an enhancement to that really high-technology HEAC system that we had for the system. We're fortuitous in the design and its connection to the outdoors. We're also fortuitous in that lobby, while not at the back of the building, is completely separated from the entry. And we could even put French doors at the entry to the lobby to create a very self-contained, quarantined space should we want to in the next phase of design. So we think that the lobby arrangement is quite nice, and the seating area is good. We would suggest that reception area getting a little bit larger and pulling back a little bit from the corridor space. So we might make that larger, but you can see there's great separation between that reception and the three offices. We're fortuitous to have, again, that self-contained separation of the shine, the director, the other program planners in that administrative space. As you go down into the building, one change we would do is to widen the corridors, much like I showed in that picture with the wide circulation space. So clearly that corridor would want to get wider. We would like to bring the health and the nurse's office down to the first floor where we have the mechanical space, because again, that would be right across the hallway from the multipurpose room. And you could store the shots, vaccines, if we ever have a flu clinic or a shingles vaccination or another COVID shot, you could administer them in the multipurpose room. We could have the refrigerators in the wellness room to the right. And I will mention that we are facilitating these rooms with great refrigerators and freezers to accommodate those vaccines moving forward. And again, that multipurpose room has plenty of windows and two doors to the outside to facilitate outdoor programming. Rick will show you the outdoor space. We have an outdoor terrace off of the multipurpose room. On the second floor, if I can go to that slide, Mandy again mentioned outdoor programming. We happen to have a five-hundred-square-foot outdoor deck that was designed to perhaps be future expansion, but is available today for outdoor programming. You can see it's about the size of an indoor program space. So it's really perfectly sized for what Mandy mentioned. The next program down from that outdoor deck on the left is the nurse's office. We suggest bringing that down to the first floor. Originally, it was on the second floor because those spaces were more private, but now we're finding there's a desire to have these a little more accessible. Again, we'd widen the corridors. And those program rooms, again, have adequate ample windows to the outdoors for fresh natural ventilation. They have divisible partitions to be enclosed. And even with the divisible partition, each half of that room has its own air conditioning and heating system already into the system, into the design. So I do want to mention that when we did the programming and the cost estimating a year ago, we built into the project budget a ten percent design contingency. So a lot of these features can be done with no cost, just moving rooms around.
You know, I'm just going to refresh everybody a little bit on the site itself. We immediately are adjacent to the conservation area. On the right-hand side, we have our green areas around the facility that we can create. We have an outdoor porch planned right now and a patio, but it looks like we may be increasing some of those hard surfaces on the outside for more outdoor activity area, and we have the space to do so. As Mandy had mentioned, the drive-through aspects of the parking lot are superb, especially if you're dealing with drive-through meet-and-greets or dropping off items or handing off items. The, we have a two-way lane that goes in from Main Street, but then separates to the right and goes around the green area and the vehicles exit on the other side as that cursor is showing. It works real slick, and I think that there's really not much more that we could talk about here. I think we've covered all of it in our earlier presentations. But it works well with what Joel has presented and what Mandy has expressed as additional needs. And we're looking forward to seeing this site, which was mentioned earlier but should be mentioned again, is graciously donated, which goes right to the bottom line of the cost. In other words, you're not paying for a piece of property. Here's a picture just to remind you of the, sorry, the side of the building as you're entering the property off of Main Street, the two-story areas, and then on the left-hand side is the one-story administration area that has direct viewing to everybody coming to the facility, which is paramount. That's something that Mandy really stressed from the beginning. And next slide, if we could. This is a view from the back. And you have the congregate area, covered porch area, and then you also have the second-floor open porch area. And again, the administration area is to your right, that one-story area where the people are walking along the sidewalk. So it creates, gives Mandy and her staff great opportunities to see exactly what's going on and gives the users of the facility a lot of opportunity for outdoor activities and fresh air.